Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the Committee of the Whole Meeting for the Sunshine Coast Regional District for Thursday, February ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. It's nine thirty, and I'd like to call this meeting to order and acknowledge that the Sunshine Coast Regional District is located on the traditional territories of the Seashell and Squamish Nations. We do have an agenda in front of us today. Directors, are there any amendments to make to this agenda? If not, I look for a motion to adopt the agenda as presented. Moved and seconded. All those in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Can I have a motion to receive all reports and communications, please? Moved, seconded. All those in favor? Thank you very much. All right, moving right on to Annex A, Corporate Carbon Neutrality Plan, and turn it over to Manager of Sustainable Development.
Thank you, Chair. It's my pleasure to share this Corporate Carbon Neutrality Plan with the Board. As part of the goal of swift action on emission, just gonna turn on my camera as well here. There we go. As part of the goal of swift action on emission reduction, the SCRD strategic plan includes a strategic priority to achieve corporate carbon neutrality, supported by a tactic of setting targets. SCRD can likely achieve carbon neutrality in two thousand and twenty-three using carbon offsets from composting activities. However, more important are actual GHD emission reductions. The plan in front of you outlines a process the SCRD can take over the coming months and years to set a policy framework that includes corporate targets as well as a variety of actions that will promote decision-making to account for corporate greenhouse gas emissions. Adopting the CCNP does not commit the Board to specific decisions. Adoption of the Corporate Carbon Neutrality Plan is a commitment to a process, and that process will seek multiple future decisions on policy, strategic operational decisions in the future. Staff recommend adoption of the Corporate Carbon Neutrality Plan, and adoption will trigger work in the plan to commence and include a forthcoming report to address specific items. Thank you. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you for that. Directors, any questions or comments? Director McMahon.
Right. Well, I'm very happy to see this. If anything, it's perhaps a little overdue. My first question was, how will this affect procurement on large projects? And as an example, I would use the reservoir proposal that we entertained a couple of years ago for what I keep calling the ferry bathtub. But the proposal that was sent by the consultants did not have anything about the GHD emissions associated with constructing the largest civil engineering project ever undertaken on the Sunshine Coast. And that seemed to me to be a glaring gap. So is there anything in this policy that would require us to consider GHD emissions associated with major infrastructure projects? Thank you.
Thank you for that. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. There's different stages in development of projects, especially for large projects of that nature. At the procurement stage, the SCRD currently has a procurement policy with broad policy statements that speak to greenhouse gas emissions. But at the point of the procurement policy applicability, there's quite a few design stages prior to that where greenhouse gases need to be incorporated. And part of the proposed plan here and the proposed policy framework would be to develop frameworks to integrate that into the operation of the organization and how we do business.
Thank you. Director Stanford.
Thank you, Chair. I am also really glad to see this. I think there's enough specifics in here to really be able to engage the public. I hope that that is considered as a big part of how we move forward with GHD reductions. There's often a disconnect with the public between climate change emergency and the specifics around GHD reductions. My question is about a lot of the greening techniques, the ideas of, for instance, putting certain trees on one side of a building versus the other, often flies in the face of fire smart procedures. So I'm hoping that there is a coordination, and again, it's all around communication, on how we mitigate fire concerns and also promote GHD reductions. So any comments towards that?
Thank you. Manager Shay.
Thank you for the question. There's a lot of work happening, or a lot of investigating happening from a variety of partners in the coastal temperate forest ecosound about how to make fire smart principles more applicable to our region. And some of those include, you know, de-limming appears to be a prime strategy which would actually stimulate growth in trees and increase carbon sequestration. But yeah, that is something that staff and others in the province are looking into.
Thank you. Director Bax.
Just a question on, when you're using this guideline for us to, when we're doing things, if we're hiring outside contractors, will the distance that they have to travel in order to come and work on the Sunshine Coast have any weight within the consideration for when we're hiring people? Example, if there's a local contractor that has a bid in compared to contractors that's based on the Sunshine, based on the lower mainland or further afield, will there be considerations given to the local contractor because of the greenhouse gases that the off-coast contractor could be contributing?
Good question that you might not be able to get an answer to today, but I'll look over to Manager Shay to see if he does have any comments.
Thank you. The procurement policy speaks in broad generalities and provides staff with some flexibility around what criteria are included in the rating process. Right now, there is some, our major contractor would be the Solid Waste and Organics Collection, and they're the only ones quantifying their greenhouse gas emissions. So there's work in, proposed work in this plan around how to work with contractors specifically and more generally around how to minimize the burden of quantification and develop tools where we may be more able to integrate that into decision-making.
Thank you. Director McMahon.
Yes, my residents are always asking me about parks equipment, specifically like leaf blowers and other belching gas-driven devices, so I hope that they are in our target.
Thank you for the question. Yes, the fleet and the equipment is within the scope of this plan and is part of ongoing service reviews for Parks Division at this point. I can't speak to the specific of where that process is at, but it is in consideration and underway.
Thank you. Director McMahon.
Yes, and finally, our emissions targets, which are sad. I see in the report that we're going to review them. Is there an ETA on that?
Manager Shay.
The policy framework and the target would be the initial first step to follow adoption of the Corporate Carbon Neutrality Plan. And staff have wrestled with the options at length and feel confident in bringing this in the not-too-distant future.
Okay. Director Stanford.
Through the chair, I just have a question of clarification. On page twenty-five, there's a chart, and I'm not quite sure what the term orders of magnitude estimates means. I just have not familiar with that, if that can be clarified.
Thank you.
It's partial list of natural gas and propane assets in buildings.
And you're referring to the asterisks at the bottom of the chart? Okay. Thank you. Manager Shay.
Thank you for the clarification question. With the volatility in price and quotes that we are getting now and the reviews on our capital plans on an annual basis, we didn't want to overpromise that these numbers were actual specific Class A cost estimates. But we're not, I'm not confident in the Class C or Class D nature, scale of range of them.
So the, does that make sense? The table of figures, excuse me, the table of figures is sort of the estimated replacement costs. So if the boiler is going to be sixty-four hundred and seventy-one dollars, it's not going to be seven hundred thousand dollars, I think is the point here. So, you know, it might be seven or eight thousand dollars, but yeah, just to give an idea of the scale of the costs. Yeah, I don't see any other hands up. This is voting all, so I would look for somebody to perhaps make some recommendations. Director McMahon.
Yes, I would like to move the recommendations on page twenty-eight. Nope, wrong page, sorry.
Page three.
Page three. Thank you for the rescue.
Thank you, and I've got seconders for that. I don't see any other hands up, so I'll call the question. Voting all directors, all those in favor. Thank you very much. That's carried. All right, and thank you, Manager Shay. Moving on to Annex B, Hillside Business Planning, Proposal for R2 two thousand and twenty-three Budget Process. I'm not sure who's speaking to this. Oh, Manager Jackson, perhaps?
Yes, thank you. I wasn't promoted on my computer there. Just one sec. All right, thank you, and sorry for the confusion then. In two thousand and nineteen, SCRD Board approved a land study and investment attraction analysis for Hillside Industrial Park. The project was subsequently canceled due to COVID nineteen, and this report advances the idea of reinvigorating this project and seeks direction for the two thousand and twenty-three R2 budget. I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you for that introduction. Directors, any questions? Director Stanford.
Yes, thank you. Again, I'm really happy to see this coming forward. I think it's long overdue that this is reexamined and we can move forward with this particular project. I do have some questions about implementing this. While I looked at the official community plan for Hillside Port Mellon, I noticed it was quite out of date, and I wondered if that had an impact on how we move forward with this particular project. And then a follow-up question is the capacity of SCREDO to be able to support moving this forward and making it as most effective as possible.
Thank you for that. Manager Jackson.
Yes, thank you for the questions. Certainly, Hillside Port Mellon OCP is our most dated OCP, to my knowledge. I believe it's nineteen ninety-five or nineteen ninety-six, so it's quite old. So this project actually does time well with the OCP Renewal Project, also known as Planning Enhancement Project Two, that staff are currently gearing up to undertake this year. That's a multi-year project, but having this information, it actually times quite well with that other project, so that as the OCP looks for renewal, we have the background knowledge to help inform that process. And in terms of SCREDO, that's a conversation that staff have yet to have with SCREDO, but one that we would certainly take on with them and determine what their capacity would be. Thank you.
Thank you. And so just, sorry, I'm just clarifying something for directors here, in that the second recommendation is actually looking for us to basically pick one of the options that are in the middle of page twenty-nine. So there are technically four options there for us when we get to that stage. So Director McMahon.
Yes, I too am in favor of this. We have not done a whole lot with Hillside over the years, but recently, a number of different imperatives have brought, I think, Hillside further up the priority list, and the timing is good. So I would be happy with a proposal for the two thousand and twenty-three Budget Process, particularly since we can fund from reserves and there is the possibility of substantial grant funding as well. So that, it just seems that everything dovetails. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Gabius.
Through the chair, could I have a little bit more information about the advantages that would be gained by having SCREDO take leadership on this project?
Sure. Thank you for the question. Through the chair, having SCREDO involved in the project has sort of two big advantages. The first would be is that it provides extra capacity in addition to SCRD staff and may take some relief off of funding that would be required at a staff level to help take on the project. And the second reason is that they do bring a different lens. Being involved in economic development, they can help to shape and form projects in a way that really helps to benefit the economic development of the Sunshine Coast, possibly more than staff could just do on their own. Thank you.
Thank you. Director White.
Yeah, I just wanted to say I love the idea of engaging SCREDO, having been around on the Board prior to the last one. Couple things. That's when SCREDO was created, and I think discussions around that time definitely anticipated that SCREDO would be involved in Hillside. So it's unfortunate it's taken this long, but that's often how things go. So that's really positive to hear. Secondly, during those years, we did have some, maybe even it was just one or two significant decisions regarding Hillside, and we struggled with them because we and SCRD staff are not really oriented to be kind of, you know, in that frame of thinking about economic development and business. And it's not, you know, it's, we've got a planning department, not an economic development department, so I think this is great to hear.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Director Bax and then Director Henderson. No, mine. Director Henderson.
Thank you, Chair. I concur with Mayor White. I think the, and in fact, before we, any of these options, I think we actually should hold them and ask SCREDO to come and talk to us about their capacity, because I don't think this should involve a budget proposal from us, as it were, from SCRD. I think SCREDO has funding to do this very thing, and let's find out what they can actually deliver for us. Thanks.
Thank you. I guess I will ask the question of staff that what would a two thousand and twenty-three budget proposal seeking leadership from SCREDO entail? Like, what would the SCRD's component of that budget proposal look like?
Thank you for the question, and that is sort of the issue here at hand, is that it is before for the two thousand and twenty-three budget approval. So we propose that the estimated budget for the project would be eighty thousand dollars and that there would be some project management costs of estimated fifteen percent, so totally ninety-two thousand dollars. Now, there might be some grant monies available, which would be a thing that could help. I would add that if SCREDO got involved, there could always be reserves left over at the end of a project that could be carried forward and redistributed elsewhere. At this point in time, though, there would be a sort of a business need and a timing to be ready to move on the project. So that is for the actual budget asked this year is to help ensure that the project actually does advance.
Okay, and I see CFO Pro with her hand up, so I'll look to you.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Just for the committee's awareness, that we have requested that SCREDO come to the round two budget deliberations as one of the conditions of their agreement is to present their work plan. And so this would be part of that process is to engage with them as far as whether or not this is something that could be incorporated into their work plan for two thousand and twenty-three. So that would be part of the consideration as well, and so it would be timely if the budget proposal and SCREDO were on the same agenda. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Director McMahon.
So, to be clear, if we choose either option one or option two, we still have the opportunity at round two to kind of shuffle the lead partner.
Yeah, or defer it.
Yeah, or defer it, but I would really rather not defer it. This has been deferred a long time. So I'm not, I'm still good with option one.
Thank you. Director Lee.
Thank you, Chair. I was just trying to get my head around this, and I note that we're using reserves to fund this. So if we approve it at round two, we would be approving earmarking some of our existing reserves for this. And if we found that it was cheaper, the reserves are still there, and so we could still use them. So I think that it's, and in the meantime, we might even get a grant and not need any of the reserves. So I think that it's a good idea to just put her in the budget and get going with it, because I think we all want it. And we prefer SCREDO, of course, so if we say option two, and we end up with option one, because we can't reach an agreement, it's still the same thing. It's just a future decision on our part sometime after budget. I believe that's right. I'd be interested to see from our CFO if I've got that straight, though. She's the one that can tell me.
CFO Pro.
Yes, Chair, that is correct.
Thank you. Okay. Director Stanford, since you haven't had a chance to speak to this subject yet. Okay. Director Bax.
So through the chair, I would like to add something to the effect that we do get a delegation from SCREDO to come talk to us?
They're already coming to round two.
Are they?
That's what I heard, yeah.
Very good. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Director Stanford.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I'd like to move that we recommend the option two on page twenty-nine, that the Stafford proposal, the two thousand and twenty-three budget process, seeking leadership from SCREDO.
And recommendation three on the original front page, which is that the recommendation be forwarded to the regular board meeting this afternoon?
Yes.
Thank you.
That too.
Do I have a seconder for that? I do have a seconder for that. Thank you. Okay, I do have a couple hands up, so speaking to the motion, Director McMahon.
I just wanted to clarify with, between option one and two, that any grant from IST, it would be the SCRD applying for the grant, not SCREDO? Would we be the applicant?
CFO Pro.
Yes, we would be likely the applicant because it is our oversight, Hillside. It's not the oversight of SCREDO. So we would just engage SCREDO to project manage, essentially.
Thank you for that. Director Henderson.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I'd like to see SCREDO before round two of the budget. This is something that's come up around our council table, seeking clarification of their role, their capacity, and yes, their plans for, well, what they did last year and what they are going to do going forward. This is the kind of project that, as somebody mentioned a few minutes ago, it's not really in our bailiwick as the staff of the SCRD. Some of us may have some experience with supporting economic development efforts, but this is right in their wheelhouse. So I'd like to make sure that they are able and committed to actually doing this, and in some ways, just give it all to them and let them manage it, the whole process. We can sign a letter of support or get funding by putting our name to the application, great. But we shouldn't be dealing with this around this table or frankly, through our hard-working staff. Thanks.
Thank you. I appreciate the comments around timing and seeing SCREDO, but at this point, round two budget's only a week and a half away. So we're, to see SCREDO first, I think would be challenging at best. But if we're going to be seeing them around two, then we do know that at least we're going to be seeing them. So Director Stanford.
No.
Director Stanford.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Just a comment that this is far more than straightforward economic advancement and development. This has an impact on the House on Biosphere Initiative, which is beyond just a business consideration. Also, Squamish First Nation is an opportunity for us to build the relationships with reconciliation. So I do think it is important that the SCRD Board maintain a strong connection with this project. It's got to be coordinated at all levels.
Thank you. I don't see any other hands up, so I will call the question on the motion on the floor. This is voting all directors. All those in favor? And opposed? That's carried. Thank you. Moving on to Annex C. In our agenda, SCRD Part- In our agenda, SCRD partnership agreement with Coast Mountain Bike Trails Association for Sprockids Park. And we turn this over to Jessica Huntington, Parks Planning and Community Development Coordinator.
Yes, hello, thank you. Just a quick summary of the report. It's providing the committee with options in terms of renewing a partnership agreement with the Coast Mountain Bike Trails Association. Since 2019, the SCRD has had a memorandum of understanding with the Coast Mountain Bike Trails Association for the shared stewardship of Sprockids Park in Area F. The way that the relationship has worked is that the SCRD has a partnership agreement with Rec Sites and Trails BC for stewardship of the recreation site. And then in turn, the SCRD has had a memorandum of understanding with the Coast Mountain Bike Trails Association to offset our on-the-ground requirements for the, the park. The Coast Mountain Bike Trails Association has demonstrated incredible capacity willingness and professionalism with their responsibilities so far, in terms of working within the terms of the agreement. And so the recommendation coming forward is that we do renew a partnership agreement with Coast Mountain Bike Trails Association for an additional two years.
Thank you very much. Director McMahon.
I'm a regular user of trails in that area and I have to say they've done an excellent job maintaining the trails. Sometimes, like when we had that windstorm in November and all those trees came down, they really had to go over and above to open those trails up again. So I am, I'm very delighted to see this coming forward. And I just, for our, you know, viewing audience at home, would like to remind everybody that that's a volunteer association and they take donations. So if you like the job you're, they're doing, you can go to their website and send them money.
Thank you Director McMahon. Director Bax.
I'd like to move that we adopt the recommendations as, for option one, as stated on page 32.
Thank you, and I've got a second or for that. I don't see any other hands up. This is voting A, B, D, E, and F. All those in favor? And that's carried. Thank you very much. And thank you for your presentation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving on to Annex D, Emergency Flood Recovery, Parks Projects Update. And turn this over to Manager Clarkson.
Good morning, thank you very much. So the purpose of this report is to provide a summary of all the parks projects related to the 2021 flooding events and the recovery projects that resulted of it. Within the report, we've got a summary of identified projects, funding approved by the board, an update on the DFA application, including approved funding, an update on the project and any staff recommendations and changes and considerations. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So this report is for information and Director McMahon.
Yes, I was mildly dismayed to note the small amount of funding we get after all that work that we put in to prove that we need the money. And I'm wondering, this is, this is slightly speculative, but does staff have any expectation that the DFA program will be changing under the new emergency management legislation coming forward? Do we have any hope of getting more money?
I don't know who wants to take that on. Manager Clarkson.
I know that Manager Trite is available remotely and he might be able to answer the questions from an emergency management BC perspective. Thank you.
Okay. Manager Trite, I see you've unmet yourself.
Yes, thank you Chair. Today, we've not received any information of any changes. I agree with the director though, it, it is a fair bit of work to secure the amount of money we had. The key always being, they will only fund for work to be done to bring the, to bring the damage or to bring the site back to what it was before, not to make any sort of improvement. And they require evidence of what it was like before the damage was done. So it, it is quite painstaking to get it and then they will only, only fund it back to what it was, not to make it any better. And that's just a policy they have. With regards to any improvement or changes, I certainly, in all of the discussions, we haven't been given any, any information that's going to change. Which isn't to say it won't, but we, I haven't been given any information towards that though.
Thank you. Director Stanford.
Yes, thank you Chair. It's just a, again, a comment, coming into this as a new trustee is that, that very thing, that so much damage was occurred. It wasn't just a one-off occurrence. It will happen again. And wondering what the strategy is to build back better, build back with an understanding that this is, this is not going to be the only time. So I do recognize they're limited with the provincial funding. But what is the long-term vision to try and mitigate the, the ongoing flooding issues and damage issues in our parks?
Thank you. Challenging question to answer on, on the fly in a meeting like that, but Manager Clarkes.
Thank you for the question and through the chair. So the way we're approaching it is just that, looking at what resiliency scope can be added to our recovery efforts. As per the approved disaster recovery plan from last year, the reserve amounts allocated to those projects included elements of that resiliency. So you'll see in Electoral Area, Catherine Lake Park, for example, we've widened the culvert, we've added some armoring to the stream with proper approvals and environmental monitoring, making sure that any future flooding events aren't impacting the repairs of that infrastructure. In the case of other projects, like the Chester Pedestrian Access Bridge, it's a little bit more challenging in that we have some inadequate stormwater infrastructure that probably needs to be looked at in terms of planning for things through a resiliency lens and our impact both upstream and downstream. So in that regard, it's been a little bit challenging and delayed the tender process for RFP, just making sure that we make sure we get a proper professional assessment of things and making sure that the options presented include effective resiliency pieces that ensure sustainability of our assets and the environment. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alright. I don't see any other hands. So I think we will move on from Annex D. Thank you very much, Manager Clarkson. Moving on to Annex E, School District 46, request for Sunshine Coast Regional District, support in principle of a long-term parkland lease. And back to Manager Clarkson, I guess.
Thank you very much. And the purpose of this report is outlining staff recommendation to proceed with support in principle for a long-term lease for the school district on a portion of SCRD's Marianne West Park. Thank you very much. I'll take any questions that you might have.
Alright. Director Bax.
I absolutely support this initiative to create more spaces. Is there, is there a timeline for the choice of options one, two, or three and, and who's going to be making those choices?
Thank you for the question.
Thank you for the question and through the chair, the, the most immediate timeline is the March 31st grant application deadline that the school district is targeting. They would request a board resolution on the subject previous so that they can populate their grant application and submit it with board support if that's the direction the board chooses to go. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to add here that on page 44, it does say that, oh, it be, it became apparent that only one location met all the requirements, which was option three. So it doesn't necessarily preclude changes, but option three is currently the preferred choice by the look of the document. Director McMahon.
Yes, I'm thinking about the timeline here. So assuming that we pass this and everything proceeded in a tickety-boo manner, when would the daycare be ready? Do we have a ETA on this?
Thank you for the question. Through the chair, nothing is set in stone. So again, it's subject to grant funding availability and award. I do know that they are doing similar projects for additional childcare facilities in underserved regions within the Lower Sunshine Coast. The project is proceeding quite rapidly up in Madera Park as well. So I think all in all, the entire grant funding and project development piece occurred within about two years. So we could expect to see things within the near term. Thank you.
Thank you. I had one question, just in sort of going through this, I know I don't get to vote on it, but I'm going to ask it anyways. It, it mentions the very first sentence of the background that the SCRD acquired the lot for community park purposes. Do we have any covenants or restrictions or hindrances on the land that would prevent this particular use? Is that something that's going to have to come to the board at a later date? Manager Jackson.
Thank you. Sorry for the staff shuffle here as we work with our technology on the table. Thank you for the question through the chair. The park was acquired for community park purposes back in 1986 or seven, I believe. And, but it was never designated park. So there's a difference with parks. You can have designated parks. So parks that we acquire, for example, through subdivision or through parkland reserve funds are automatically designated. Local government can also choose to designate a park, or sorry, dedicate a park, apologies. And then this will get to the second trip up, which is designation. So there's an OCP land use designation, which is different than a dedication. So a dedicated park has lost its title. It's no longer held in fee simple. There is a process to, to change that, but that's not the case here. Marianne West Park is still held in fee simple. The regional district never dedicated it. So it has title, so it is freehold land that we own and can use to do for, use it for a number of purposes. We can choose to go through a disposition process if we wanted to. But in this particular case, the issue at hand would be the fact that the park is partially designated park in the Elfinstone Official Community Plan and partially designated for an assembly use institutional. So it's about the bottom quarter of the park, roughly speaking, the southern quarter towards Chester where we have the Fire Hall and the existing Frank West Hall that's designated for institutional uses. In the preferred option though, it's partially within that designated area, but partially within the area designated park. So through staff's review of the Elfinstone Official Community Plan, we feel that the proper course of action would be to amend that land use designation boundary to better reflect the actual site development. Noting that the park would remain within, or sorry, the, the park, the land that we have would remain in SCRD's control. So it's, it's within our purview to make the changes as we would see fit in terms of how it actually developed. But there would be a proper public process that would happen through the official community plan amendment to ensure that the community had a say in this.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for that answer. Director McMahon.
Right, I have two more questions. The first one, seeing as how we just approved a new carbon neutrality framework, is, does the school district have a similar policy and how can we ensure that a new building will be built to the highest standards?
Thank you for the question and through the chair. While I can't speak to the governing policies of the school district, but what I can say is that any agreement for any future development on site will specifically outline the rights, roles, responsibilities and make sure that sustainability of the environment and our assets is top priority. Thank you.
Thank you.
And the other question, because this is definitely going to come up, because we're going to lose trees. And, you know, folks are very sensitive to that these days. We've had a lot of development in Elfinstone. Is there any kind of a, could, could we require trees to be replaced in other locations? And I'm thinking, I realize it's not our property, but the trail, the connector trail, the Huff Road has suffered a lot of tree loss in the last couple of years, partly because they, they were scrubby trees aging out. But, you know, is there, is there an opportunity here?
Just before staff answer that, I'm going to suggest that might be a little outside of the recommendations we're looking at, but might be within scope of talking about OCP amendments and, and things of that nature. So I'll look to the staff table to see if there's anything they want to add to that today.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And I'll, I'll let Manager Jackson talk to the, the OCP implications. I guess what I would just add is just preliminary discussions with school district related to this proposal and this project. They're very amicable to working with us on tree retention, some sort of offset, those sorts of things. I think they realize that, you know, it is a park and there is going to be some additional hoops to jump through and they're more than willing to come to the table and, and work with us on those things in order to achieve a, a successful project. Thank you.
Thank you. Director White.
Just, no questions, but I'll take the opportunity to comment on a couple of that discussion, since I know a couple of things about the school district. Our school districts recognized as one of the provincial leaders in building sustainability. These, these kinds of, you know, carbon neutral plans have been, been something the, the district's been following closely for over a decade. And especially when it comes to installing solar panels in our schools, we're leading the province in it. So it's something that our community can be really proud of and something that I think the SCRD can be excited about in partnering, partnering on this project. Something else I've observed recently too in Gibson's is, and people may have heard of this, is unfortunately, there were some trees that had to be removed from the Gibson's Elementary property. And the, the district used it, and the school used it as a really exciting opportunity to engage students in replanting trees on that site. And I'm sure they'd be excited about doing something similar here.
Thank you. Director McMahon.
Yes, well, this sounds great. So I am happy to move the recommendations on page 43.
Thank you very much, and I do have a second or for that. This is voting A, B, D, E, and F, because it's parks. And I don't see any other hands up, so I will call the question. All those in favor? And that's carried. Thank you very much. And thank you, Manager Clarkson and Manager Jackson. Moving on to Annex F in our agenda, Chapman Water System siphons update. And we're doing the staff shuffle over there. And I think this is Manager Waki who's going to be speaking to this.
Thank you Chair. Multiple licenses and permits to operate the siphons expire this year. The siphons at Chapman and Edwards Lake. Staff are working towards applying for extensions for the noted permits and, and licenses. But it is noted in the, in the permits that it's an emergency siphon. So every year or two, we have to renew these licenses. And staff are planning on doing that in February to extend the, the ability to use the siphon through this summer. With the, the hope that they will be extended at least through to a year from the time that these permits expire, which would be the end of next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Directors, any questions? Director McMahon.
I would really hate to be sitting here in August biting my nails as to whether we're going to get the permit approved for an extension. When, when do we expect we will hear back from our application?
Go ahead.
Thank you Chair. Sometimes it can take quite some time. I believe in the past years, it's been into August that we have these approvals.
It's not the answer, not the answer I think we wanted to hear, but Director McMahon, go ahead.
Yes, well, back to the biting nails thing. I'm, I'm wondering what we can do to advocate with the province to get a commitment from them that they will prioritize our application. application and, and recognize that we have had back-to-back emergencies. So we need this as, as for the security of our water supply.
I, I would go so far as to say that I think we should be having a bigger conversation about leaving the siphons in permanently, even if they're only used on an urgency basis. You know, we know that they're low impact, both in operations and in, you know, lay on the land. I don't, yeah, Director McMahon?
Yes. I'm wondering what our next step here is. And would it be to write to the minister? What is, I'm trying to, trying to think procedurally, what is our, what is our best thing to do?
Good question. I don't know if staff have a, have some guides, or guidelines here. CAO McKinley, thank you for rescuing me.
That's okay. There, there's certainly associated with this, an opportunity for advocacy from the board to help elevate the priority of this at the provincial level. If directed, staff would be happy to craft letters to appropriate ministerial staff to, on the board's behalf, to see what we can do to expedite their review and, and potential approval of the extension.
Thank you. And not to put Director Lee on the spot, but I believe he has some thoughts on this matter as well, particularly when we get to the recommendation-making stage. But Director Lee, I'm going to look to you if you want to add anything at this time.
Thank you, Chair. Yes. I believe we could do two things to help ourselves. One would be a letter of advocacy as outlined by CAO. And I think the second thing would be to get a letter of support from, be requested from the Seashell Nation in support of the application for an extension of the park use permit and use approval, so that we can continue to use the siphon systems in the summer of 2023, because I believe that's our first step. And then later on, I think our second step would be to try and get it made permanent. But we, I think we'd have a much quicker response, simply getting it for twenty twenty-three summer.
Right.
As an emergency.
Worry, worry about the now, and then we'll worry about the longer.
Yeah, worry about the now, I believe, would be the right thing.
Right.
So I, I would be prepared to make a motion that we accept the recommendations on page fifty-three, but add those two and that, the letter of support and whatever CAO McKinley said there, which is a, a letter to the appropriate government officials be drafted and signed by the board, on behalf of the board. Is that pretty close what you said, CAO?
Getting a thumbs up from the CAO over there. So, and the letter of support, one, thank you for giving me wording, so that would read that a letter of support be requested from the Seashell Nation in support of the SCRD's application for an extension to the park use permit and use approval to continue using the siphon systems in Chapman and Edwards Lake in summer 2023.
Yes.
Okay. Plus the, the, the letter of advocacy.
And one more, and that letter of advocacy.
Did you get all that? Perfect. Do I have a second or for that? I do have a second or for that. Thank you. I've also got a speakers list. Director Backs to the motion on the floor?
Well, I, so I just wanted some more information, so that we've got, we're making an application to the province to extend the emergency use of this siphon. And until they respond, we don't have to do anything. We don't have to remove the siphon or anything like that, do we?
Manager Waki?
Thank you for the question, Chair. The, the way it stands right now, we don't have to do anything until October thirty-first of 2023, and by that time, we have to have the siphons removed, as it stands right now.
Follow-up?
Go ahead.
Could we work concurrently, like, could we work together on making an application for the extension of the emergency use as well as making an application for permanent use? Or should they, well, I think that the application for extended use should be in mind of trying to get it changed to a permanent use. Instead of going through the two steps, can we bring those, that, those two steps together as one? I'd just like to see the province give us permission to use this low-impact system to allow us to use it permanently.
The challenge, of course, is that if we roll it into one, and the province, it does not agree with the long-term use?
Then we get the, then we don't get the short-term use.
That's right. So I think, I think the prudent thing is to do them as two separate requests, which is, I think, Director Lee's, you know, second and that with regards to the advocacy piece.
And should the province refuse our application to extend the emergency use, is there an appeal that we can go to after that?
That's a good question. Do we know that at this time?
Thank you, Chair. I'm not sure if there's an appeal process.
Okay. Thank you. Director McMahon?
Yes. My concern is that one year is not very long, and we, we don't, we won't have Langdale online next year. So I think we should actually consider two years that, that we would like to extend this for. This is a big rigmarole we go through every time. We have to go do all these applications. And we know that this is a need. So I would say two years.
Thank you. I believe the last ask was for two years, but we were only granted one. So I'm seeing some head nodding over there. So as you move, as staff move forward through this process, are you looking at a two-year request again? Manager Waki?
Thank you, Chair. The maximum that they, the park's use permit can be issued for is two years. So we would be asking for a two-year, as we did last year, but they chose to only give us one year.
Thank you. Director Stamford?
Thank you.
My apologies, if I may. CAO McKinley, I see your hand up.
Yeah. Just on that, as a point of clarification, if, if the direction was to, for staff to specify that we'd ideally like to extend it for two years, the second to last and that would be changed, the request of the letter of support would be specific, not just to the 2023 year, but for the, for up to two years. There'd be a minor change in the penultimate and that.
So that would read the siphon systems in Chapman and Edwards Lakes for 2023 and 2024. Director Lee?
Yeah, I, I think that I'd be okay with amending that amendment.
Okay. Well, you made the recommendation initially, so you're making an amendment to your recommendation?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Which I believe I can do.
I'll second that, just to get it on the floor. Okay, so I see a number of speakers. We're going to deal with the amendment firsts, or any of these on the amendment? No? Director Henderson?
Yes. And it's sort of my overall comment. The siphons need to be a permanent component. Discussing whether we're going to get letters of support or advocate for one or two years, we've got to advocate for this for the long term. And I think this is the time to do it. I'm mindful of your comment that perhaps if we take that risk, they'll, they won't give us anything, but let's get that on the table. We don't need to be sitting here every year discussing, can we keep the siphons? We know we're going to need them. So I, I don't mind the amendment, because it's better than the original, but I think the amendment should be until, we seek approval to leave them in until further notice, or until we decide they're not needed.
Okay. Thank you for that. I don't see anybody else looking to speak to the amendment to the motion, so I will call the question on the amendment. All those in favor? Any opposed? And that's carried. Thank you. Okay. Back to my speakers list for the amended motion. Director Stamford?
Yes, this kind of follows what Director Henderson mentioned, and that is, apart from writing letters, is there more advocacy we can do? Is there an opportunity to, at UBCM, we have meetings with the ministers. Is this something that can be put on the agenda front and center? That this is a workable, part-time solution to an ongoing strategy to try and fix the water concerns on the Sunshine Coast. But that it isn't just a one-off emergency situation, it's an option that seems to cover a number of conditions, that it's not hugely impactful, and a variety of other issues. Can we speak to this front and center at UBCM?
I mean, short answer is yes. We can absolutely, you know, add that to the list of minister meetings, I think, that we look for at UBCM. There is a process. I know that we talk about minister meetings later, but I, I'm, I have no doubt that it will come up naturally. So I don't think we need to make any motions to that effect. Director McMahon?
After we deal with this motion, I would like to talk about follow-ups, because I think we do need to aggressively follow this up. In regards to permanent placement of siphons, I think very likely, that's what we're looking, we will be looking at. But I think we need to have a broader conversation about the whole, what we're doing and who's responsible, and, and where the nation wants to go with Chapman Lake and Chapman Creek. One of my concerns is that last year, if we hadn't had the siphons in, the, the creek would have dried up entirely, and it would have had a major impact on the fish in that creek. And the reason that we're responsible right now is because we're the water purveyor. If for some reason we weren't purveying Chapman Creek water, then who would be responsible for continuing the environmental flow in Chapman Creek? As far as I know, that would be nobody. So I, I really think that we should take the time to, to think through the broader strategy. And in the meantime, we definitely need those siphons. So, thank you.
Thank you. CAO McKinley?
I would say in terms of sort of how to move forward, there's, there's many options. But this is certainly the siphons as a potential permanent emergency measure that we would use as and when required on a more or less permanent basis, which we're not permitted to do right now, is certainly in scope as part of the ongoing upcoming water summit sessions. The next one's tentatively scheduled for March thirteenth. We were trying to get it ahead, but we had the Regional Hospital District meeting conflicting with it and a number of other things. So this would be just one of the many tools that we would be discussing, including with Seashell Nation, around how can we deal with water, both short-term, long-term, midterm, conservation, protection, all of those things. And coming out of those discussions, then ideally, if the siphons as a permanent emergency measure was coming out of that, then an advocacy plan, there would be a plan for staff and a plan for elected officials moving together to advocate for these things as well. So there could be some, some direction or some ideas on how to move forward together coming fairly quickly.
Thank you. Director Henderson?
Maybe just to clarify that last comment, there could be some plans coming forward to the CAO. Could you explain what that means, please?
Yeah, we haven't had the summit yet, so there's been no staff direction provided as a result of the conversations that haven't occurred. I would imagine that there's going to be a lot of, a lot of these things, things like the siphons becoming a permanent tool that would be of mutual interest and potentially of mutual agreement. We will learn, we will soon learn how many voices will want to be added to ours to advocate to the province to allow us to do that. First, to make sure that we have the ability to continue to use it this year and ideally next year, and then as a permanent management tool for drought management emergencies.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks for that. In December, I guess, I could go on for hours about this because, but we just don't seem to be moving fast enough. So perhaps two, two specific questions. The first is, when are we going to see some modeling on the demand, the need for water this year, because that was asked for in December? And the second is, on the partway through page fifty-five of our agenda package, it references the Church Road Wellfield project is expected to be completed and operational by summer 2023. Can we have some clarity, please, on, because I hear it's also being tested, and I hear other conflicting things in the, within the public. So, two things. When are we going to get modeling that, based on different variables, we'll know how much water we need, we need, and when is Church Road actually fully going to be in full operation?
Thank you for that. Manager Waki?
Thank you, Chair. I believe what's being referenced is the modeling for the distribution system that is currently underway right now. And we're expecting that modeling ability to be completed by early summer, June-ish. So then that will be able to model in our, in our distribution system, if we were to have a certain impact of flows or future development, we would, would be able to model that. What was this, the second question again, please?
The second question was...
If I might, just before we go to the second one, no, the request that I made in December was a modeling based on different assumptions related to drought lengths and, and demand, whether it's at stage four or stage three, so that we have a delta, a difference based on those assumptions, that if, if we want to avoid stage four and three, this is how much water we'd need to, to avoid that, given the assumptions of how long the drought lasts.
Thank you for the question. So I don't believe that there was a resolution adopted by the board that was related to what I think, when you say water modeling, perhaps you mean forecasting. There is the 2018 water demand analysis that provides several scenarios. We could do some rough calculations. Of course, it depends, it's going to depend on snowpack. We know that snowpack is...
That's an assumption. Yes, I agree.
Snowpack is below normal right now, but there are quite a few months ahead for snowpack to accumulate. It will depend on temperatures. It will depend on water use. It will depend when we implement water conservation regulations. That, those are a number of factors that we take into account when we implement water conservation regulations. In terms of total, like, the total amount of water that we need, it also depends on how much water we have, based on forecasts and snowpack as well. So if that's something that the board would like to request from staff, I will turn it back to you.
Thank you.
I'd be happy to make that motion. I, I thought, I thought it was generally accepted that it would be done.
We currently have a motion on the floor?
I understand. I'm just commenting. I'll be, in due course, very happy to make a motion if that's necessary.
Thank you. Now, your second question was regarding what is the status of the Church Road Wellfield project?
Yes.
In the context of that paragraph on page fifty-five, expected to be completed and operational by summer 2023. Hopefully, we've got better news than that. Manager Waki?
Thank you, Chair. We're continuing to work through the bugs right now. We have staff and contractors on site going over all of the equipment. We're doing some minor pump flow tests right now, and we will be doing more in the coming weeks. And we'll continue towards commission, full commissioning, hopefully by the summer.
Oh, sorry, Chair, but, so we might not have water from Church Road until the summer starts essentially in July. So, but it ends, I guess, in September. So this is such a key issue. I, we need some clarity. Surely, there, there are some of the, I don't know, the contractors can give us assurances. Well, let me ask maybe a more specific question. Are the pumps and the chips that we've been waiting for, are they now on site?
Thank you, Chair. Yes. We, we have, all the equipment has been installed on site, and we're now commissioning it.
Thank you. Director Gabias.
Thank you Chair, and you might be able to answer this question for me, um, has the province ever communicated specific reasons why the siphons? Are to be used for emergency purposes only, are they like environmental reasons or?
I'm going to look to staff because I don't actually know the answer to that offhand, so go ahead.
Uh, thank you for the question and through the chair, um, I would. Uh, recommend that you look back to the Chapman Lake Expansion Project, um, there's a. A news release that is on that webpage, I'm happy to share that link on the S E R D dot C A web, webpage. And there's some pretty good information in there about why that project wasn't approved, they're. Essentially, it says no, no new permanent infrastructure in the park, so the siphons are not seen as permanent. They're seen as temporary emergency, um, water source that we can use only in stage four, we can test it in stage three, but we can only have it be operational in stage four. And that news release also says, please go look at other sources. And that's what we've been doing.
Thank you. Okay, I don't see any other hands up, uh, so I'm going to call the question on the amended motion that's on the floor. Uh, it's voting A, B, D, E, F and C Shelt, all those in favor? Thank you, that's carried. Director McMahon.
Yes, I'm, uh, I'm looking for a way to ensure that we follow up in a timely manner and remind the province that we are waiting for answers, so. I'm wondering if perhaps the best way would be to, uh. To request that our, um, Chair and our CAO. Work together and come up with a kind of a schedule of follow-ups, like if we don't hear back. In one month, we will phone, and if we don't hear back in two months, we will.
Knock on doors.
Knock on door, whatever, but, uh, I'm wondering if we might task them with that.
Chair Lee, how do you feel about this particular, uh, tasking?
Uh, yes, if it would, uh, provide us with, uh, authorization to beat on doors as appropriate, I think it's. A heck of a good motion, so we can just go forward and do what we feel needs to be done. And, uh, then if we don't do it, you guys can, uh, get us after the fact, but hopefully we'll be, would be proactive at doing that. I'd be very happy to do that and in concert with. Uh, our other partner, partners. Uh, we would request their assistance, of course, as well. But that would be voluntary on their part. So I think that's a good, good motion if I could. Get it clear, but we'd have to make that after this one, right, or? Because we can't make.
Well, we haven't made anything yet. So, nothing's on the floor at this moment.
Oh, I see, okay.
Director Henderson.
Thank you, um, I, not to take away from that, but I, I guess I would assume that's sort of operational. Uh, to bring it back, if we don't. Get an answer or response to this letter in the next couple of weeks, let's talk about it and. Um, but, but my motion was to follow up with the, my request that we. Have staff as a matter of urgency, provide detailed, a detailed model. Or water demand under various scenarios in, uh, related to drought. In twenty twenty-three. Obviously didn't pick that out ahead of time, but. Essentially what I'm trying to get at is let's get this modeling done, so we know what our shortages could be. And tell the public, get them out there, because I think people tend to think we're fine until we actually make the decision, maybe people would. Be willing to be, uh, more conservation conscious, if we tell them ahead of time that based on different scenarios, we're going to have this shortage. So, sorry, I'm speaking to the motion, I, while trying to make it. So the motion is that staff as a matter of urgency produce a model of water demand. Based on various scenarios related to potential drought situations. And, yeah, I'll leave it at that, I think staff know what I'm getting at.
Just before I look for a second or I'm going to look over at the staff table to see if there's any clarifying. Parts that you would like added or that would be helpful to add to this, okay, not seeing any, anybody jumping up, so. I'll look for a second or for that. Actually, I will second it to put it on the floor, thank you, uh, Director Lee, I see your hand up.
I, I would re- definitely like that, of course, because we're operating on twenty eighteen figures. Uh, which stopped, I believe, in September or October, never anticipating a November, December issue. Uh, but, uh. I, I hope, I don't know if it's a fair question of staff, but. I believe it took quite a while to produce that twenty eighteen report, I don't believe it was something that. Was done in, in a matter of months. And I think we might be asking them to update that twenty eighteen. Plan. Or just a section of it, so I'd be interested in their thoughts on what it would look like and how long it might take them.
Uh, thank you for the question and through the chair, we will not be updating the water demand analysis that was completed by a consultant who has expertise in that type of forecasting. But we can give our best estimates based on the information that we have available and, um. I'm not sure, I think it's more related to, um, staff capacity rather than the amount of time that it will take, but, um, that's something that we could again bring back estimates.
Thank you, uh, Director McMahon. Okay, uh, Director Henderson, I see your hand up. No?
No, no, sorry, I didn't knock, uh, take it down.
Thank you, Director Backs.
Yeah, I think before I, uh, I want to ask staff to do, uh, this kind of in-depth forecasting that, uh, is the ask of this motion. I'd like, uh, them to just give a, uh, a cursory. Answer, come back to us maybe in the next short while to, to see what kind of. What kind of, um, resources that they're going to, uh, have to dedicate to this. Uh, as a, like a quick estimate, is it going to take them a hundred staff hours, is it going to take them ten staff hours? Uh, I don't want to overload the staff with something like this. So an amendment to the motion would be. To, uh, ask, ask that staff, instead of asking for a forecast, ask them to give us an estimate.
If you're looking to substantially change the motion, it's not an amendment, it would just be, we would defeat this and pass a new motion.
Copy that.
Thank you, uh, however, I will ask a question of staff, uh, tangential to that. In that we had a lot of support from EMBC, uh, and consultants over this fall and early winter with the emergency situation. Uh, was any, any component of this contemplated with that provincial resourcing, like did they help do any demand analysis? Last year that we might be able to translate forward? If that makes sense.
Thank you for the question, uh, the consultant that we worked with was looking mainly at emergency response plans and scenarios. An example would be, how much bottled water would we need and how, where would it come from, how much would it cost, where would we store it, how do we get it to the coast? They weren't looking at scenario, or forecasting, or water demand analysis.
Thank you, uh, Director McMahon.
I'm just slightly unclear on what we're requesting here, so, uh, I'd appreciate the motion read back, because if we're asking for a staff report on demand. Uh, I'm fine with that, if we're asking for a large, complex report, then that's a different question, thank you.
Thank you, um, CAO McKinley.
Yeah, just, um, I'm just wrapping my head around this as well in terms of what the specific request or the specific direction might be. I'm wondering, and, and, uh, I know, um, Mayor Henderson wasn't here last summer at the meetings, uh, necessarily, but we would regularly have. GM Rosenbaum come in and essentially, based on all the factors that, uh. Mia was just describing, he would come in regularly and give an updated. Forecast on water usage, water availability, those types of things with slides, et cetera. I'm, I'm wondering if this is sort of that? Or if this is different from that, because that, that was combining like snowpack, all those other things and trying to give a. A, a look at where things sit right now, where we thought we'd be based on the last update and what we think is going to happen moving forward based on everything we know now. And then there would be another one forthcoming and, and maybe, maybe. That satisfies the potential direction, I'm, I'm just, I'm still a little unclear myself.
Thank you, uh, Director Henderson.
Uh, I think we need all of those now. I think we, this is what I'm getting at, whatever reports, and I did watch some of them, uh, last year, but. By the time we're getting those reports, by definition, it's too late to actually do much about them. So, you know, I think it would help even with our appeals to the province to, to be able to present. Hey, Mr. Minister, what do you think is our fut- our summer going to look like? If it's fifty days of drought, if it's seventy-five days of drought. If come June, the snowpack is higher by fifty percent or lower by fifty percent. This is the shortage that we have to meet the demands from our community. Getting that information now helps everything else we're talking about. And it will highlight the need to find other sources of water in the short term. So I, I'm sorry, I don't see why this is even, it just, let's get on with it, we desperately, desperately need this.
Thank you, Director Backs.
Well, I appreciate, uh, the, uh, the idea that, uh, Director Henderson is, uh, is trying to bring forward, I think that, uh, it's really a futile. Uh, exercise to try to, uh, to try to think of all the variables that could happen between now and next summer. Uh, we can't forecast, uh. We can't forecast ahead more than a couple of weeks and it gets really sketchy at the end of that. Uh, if we, if we were to take. What, if we, if we want to express our, uh, the urgency that we're, uh, that we're feeling. To the province, I think that the facts of last summer's event that's, that spread into December is enough to, uh, to show. The urgency, uh, if this coming summer is, uh, is any worse or any better. Uh, uh, we cannot tell, no matter how much staff time we throw at it, we're not going to be able to tell if it's going to be worse or better. We, we just don't have that, the science isn't there to forecast that far ahead. And, and we could think of every different scenario that we want to, but we're not going to get any answers that are any good to us. Um, I think that just using the facts of the history that we've just been through is probably enough to, uh. To try to sway the province into allowing us to use this, uh, resource that has very low impact and let us, uh, uh, continue to use it.
Thank you, uh, Director Gabias, you haven't had a chance to speak, so go ahead.
Thank you Chair and through you, um, I, what I understand from, um, Director Henderson and what I would like to see too is. Uh, kind of a. How do we communicate to our constituents what to expect, so, you know, are we expecting stage four this summer? Is this a, a real possibility, probably, like then let's prepare for that, because now is the time to prepare for it, like if we, if people have big gardens. Uh, maybe now is the time to, to. Have a, install a rainwater catchment system, because it's raining now, it's not going to be raining in July, so it's going to be too late now, so. What I would like, I, like, I'm, I'm not looking for a, a really specific, um, detailed modeling, but rather a communication strategy. Right now, what do we tell our constituents so that they can be ready for whatever is to come this summer?
Thank you, uh, Director McMahon.
Two parts, yes, I agree with, uh, Director Backs, we, we don't have a crystal ball, so we can't possibly predict. What will happen, last year we had a very good snowpack and a late one too, uh, and it didn't save us. That said, I loved the water updates, it was very helpful, the community wants to know, is there a lot of water in the creek? Do we have a big snowpack, how are things going, so some kind of regular update? Just to tell the community how things are doing would, would be very valuable. And just as an addition, I have been trying to find that chart that shows when all the stages were called in previous years. Because that comes up quite frequently, if we can just put that in an easy to find place, so that people can reference it, reference it, that would be great. We do need to communicate because there is a lot of anxiety, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Director Lee, to the motion on the floor?
Uh, thank you Chair, um, I, I had two thoughts. Uh, we've wandered quite a bit off the original motion.
Yes.
And we probably should at least deal with the original motion first.
Hence, to the motion.
Yes, and then, and then work from there, if we have an additional motion to make separate from this. This is probably a good time to do it, so I'd be happy to continue that discussion. Um, and my, so that's my first comment. Uh, and I'm not asking for the question to be asked, by the way. Just wondering what the, what the group thought. And, yes, I, I too am interested in what would be different in twenty twenty-three summer from twenty twenty-two summer? If it was a repeat, that's, I think, what everybody's, it's what everybody's on everybody's mind. And it's a simpler question, because we know what happened in twenty twenty-two. So the, the question is what would be different in twenty twenty-three?
Right.
And, uh, but, uh, that's, that's just my contribution to this discussion, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Director Henderson.
Thank you, uh, what would be different is every one of us and every member of the public has their own views. And their own sense of dread, probably, about what this year might look like. So history is a good starting point, but what I'm envisioning is something that lets the citizens know. Hey, if you think there's going to be a hundred, hundred-day drought, this is the shortfall. This is the amount of water we need to find from somewhere, whether it's conservation, new supply, or we get lucky and have a lot of snow. So I think that last year is a good start, but you do this everywhere, you, you, you look at different variables. And, and with that, you can draw on those variables and make your own assumptions. So I think that's useful for the citizens, I think it's useful for this board to have that, that kind of in, information. And the other thing is, uh, the ongoing updates throughout the year, of course, they must continue. Uh, but that's after the fact, but then all we're doing is reacting and saying, gosh, things are in trouble or. Or we hope that we'll be okay, or we got boil water advisory or heck, why do we even worry, it's been a rainy year. But some reports after the fact are, are helpful, but, but folks, we've got to get out in front of this.
Thank you. I don't see any other hands up, um. So I will call the question on the motion on the floor, all those in favor? Oh.
Yes.
Thank, thank you Director Gabias, uh, could we have the motion read? Do you have something? Uh, no, Director Henderson's motion. Oh, you don't have a microphone. One moment, please.
And that staff follow up with the request to produce a model of water demand based on various scenarios of potential drought situations for twenty twenty-three.
Thank you, um, is that adequately clear to everybody? Okay, I will call the question then, all those in favor? And opposed? I'm going to try that one more time, all those in favor? Four opposed. Three opposed, uh, motion's carried. Thank you. Anything else on this subject? Before we move on, Director Backs.
Is it appropriate for me to add another motion to, so? Is it appropriate for me to add another motion to, so my, my motion is to, um, to show, to create a report as to what is different, uh, this year than, than what happened last year? So an example would be if, uh, if we're hitting a drought, i- if we use the historical record of last year, and then we add on the Church Road well and the other improvements that we're doing to our water system, how is that gonna affect, uh, the, uh, the water usage? The, how is that gonna affect the stage restrictions that we go through?
I think at a high level, that's basically what we just passed a motion for.
All right, but it, yeah, it's, that's a simpler version.
In terms of what other conditions are looking like leading in, uh, we will be receiving that, we will start receiving that information about snowpack and things like that imminently, I, I would expect, which does look at historical comparisons?
I'm gonna withdraw.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, Director Lee?
I'm sufficiently confused that I must ask what happened to the original motion.
The motion was carried, um, and I, it's been pointed out to me that I forgot to ask if those who were opposed wanted their votes recorded.
The original motion was to issue a letter, uh, to, to the government?
No, we voted on that already.
Voted and passed both of those?
Yep.
Okay, so that was my question.
It's okay. Um, so those-
Chair, may I confirm, then, did Mr., uh, Director Lee vote the way he wanted to vote on this recent, this last motion?
Director Lee?
Uh, I would have, uh, if I'd understood the original first, I would have, that we'd finished with it, I probably would have voted in favor, but it didn't matter because it passed, so.
It did pass, yeah.
I'm content.
Um, so back to my original question, did those who voted in opposition want their votes recorded?
Yes, please.
Director Backs, Director McMahon. Um, who was the third person in opposed?
It was the guy who didn't vote.
Okay, okay. Okay, so Director Backs and Director Ma- McMahon. Okay, I don't see any other hands up. Uh, shall we take a 10-minute break?
Yes.
Just to replenish our coffee and, perfect. We'll see you at, uh, 11:10. Thank you.
Welcome back to the Committee of the Whole for the Sunshine Coast Regional District for Thursday, February ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. We are moving on in our agenda to Annex G, pages fifty-six to fifty-eight, which is Water Sampling Services Contract Term Extension. So turn this back over to Manager Waki if he has anything to add to the report.
Thank you Chair. The, the Water Utilities Department and the landfill does sampling on a regular basis. We've had a contract with Elements Materials for a few years here and we're looking to extend it for one more year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Directors, any questions or Director McMahon?
I would like to move the recommendations on page fifty-six.
Thank you, and I've got seconders for that. I don't see any other hands up. Oh, Director Lee.
Sorry, I was just getting my act together here. I was wondering on this sampling that it were going to be going for an additional year. Might not be right on topic, but how often do we sample the standalone wells and how the heck do we do that for the standalone wells?
Thank you Chair. For production wells, we, we sample regularly. It's all posted on our website. We'll do drinking water analysis, bacteriological and disinfection byproducts on all of our production wells, again quite regularly, along with the distribution systems. For wells, if you're referring to test wells that we've drilled in the past, we have a report from a hydrologist with sample results from that drilling and, and we don't do further testing on those test wells that we've got.
Director Lee.
Thank you. My knowledge is limited on, on the whole testing regime, of course. I understand though from previous that we do it around four times a day or, or four times a week at Chapman. Is that kind of what we would do in South Pender and North Pender? And would we do the same thing for the wells? Because they're kind of, the wells are typically way out in the wilderness compared to the others for our purposes.
I just, before I go back to Manager Waki, I just want to clarify, when you mean wells, you're meaning drinking water wells?
Yes, drinking water wells, online wells.
Thank you. Thank you Chair. Again, we test it weekly for bacteriological throughout the systems and raw water as well for all of our systems. So same Somes Point, we'll, we'll do a raw water from the well and we'll do coliform samples throughout the system weekly. We also do disinfection byproducts. That's like trihalamethanes, how, how turbidity reacts with chlorine in effect. We do that quarterly. And then we do water potability semi-annually. So that has the whole gamut of metals and, and, let me just see here. Our routine analysis is things like pH alkalinity, sulfates, hardness, it goes on and on. Metals, we test for aluminum, boron, cadmium, you know, there's many different metals we test for and volatile organic compounds such as benzene, toluene. We do that twice a year at all of our sources. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, that's exactly what I.
Thank you. I don't see any other hands up, so I will call the question. A, B, D, E, F and C, Shelt, all those in favor? And that's carried. Thank you very much. Moving on to Annex H, Supply and Delivery of Brass Water Service Fittings Contract Term Extension. The reports here, it's fairly straightforward. I, I won't even turn to Manager Waki this time. Directors, Director Bax?
Yeah, just have a question about, is this a forecast of, of what you are ordering from this company for a year? Or I just don't understand how this, how the pricing comes from this. It's not just a simple, I'm going to order some more brass fittings and you pay for them. What's the purpose of this type of contract?
Thank you for that. Manager Waki?
Thank you Chair. Yes, the, the overall price of the contract extension of seventy-three thousand nine hundred and two is an estimate from historical volumes that we've used. So we, we have done capital works, maintenance, third-party work orders for years. And, and we estimate volumes that we will use. So there's a per-unit price for every single fitting that we purchase. And we have told the supplier an estimated volume that we might order from them. And then we order as, as needed on the set unit price. And, and this seventy-three thousand dollars is our estimated total dollar value that we estimate we will purchase.
Go ahead.
So this locks in a price for, for the district with the supplier?
Thank you Chair, that's correct. It locks in a price for every single unit that we purchase from them. And brass and coppers pricing right now for the last couple of years has been very volatile. So it's good to lock in on the price.
Thank you for the answer.
Thank you. I've got a very general follow-up to that. Looking at the table that's at the top of page sixty, that does show the historical. And we know that there was a fair bump up in two thousand and twenty-two due to supply chain issues and I believe an increased anticipated demand. I'm just wondering sort of overall, not specifics, how well do we track what we've forecasted in the, the quotes versus what we actually spent? Like, the, the value of the contract is listed here, but it's not the actual value of our expenditures under the contract. Kind of a specific question, I know, but looking for a vague answer.
Yeah, the vague answer would be, no, we review every year what we've, we've purchased and that's how we base our estimates for the coming year. I, I, I know that it was reviewed. I can't tell you specifically what was purchased last year, what the volume is, but the, the value for last year is adequate.
Okay. Thank you. Director McMahon?
I'd like to move the recommendations on page fifty-nine.
Thank you. And I've got a seconder for that. Director Stamford?
Yeah, this is more of a general question. We're, I seem to be seeing a spate of extension requests coming to Cal. Will we be seeing a spate of external vendor competitions in the coming year, or is this a normal turnover for how we operate?
Thank you Chair. Usually these contracts are, are put out for tender for a three-year term with either a two-one-year extensions or a two-year extension. And, and you're correct in noting that this is the last extension for both of these contracts. So this coming fall, we will be tendering out for the, for the general public to bid on for these two contracts. Thank you.
Go ahead. Mic's off.
Is this a normal work, our flow of external vendor competitions coming up in the fall? Or is this going to be more than normal? Or is this just how we operate over a, a term basis?
I think it's a, a bit of a mix of, of both. We, we have a number of contracts that we go out for, for any, anything. This is how we do purchasing. We, we do purchasing rules that we go by. And that's how we purchase our services, our equipment.
Just, just to add on to that, they do tend to come in clumps. Just the way the, the way the workflow proceeded previously. Okay, I don't see any other hands up, so I will call the question. A, B, D, E, F and C, Shelt, all those in favor? And that's carried. Thank you. Moving on to Annex I, Request for Proposal two-two-three-seven-zero-one-nine Contract Award for Wood Creek Park Waste Water Treatment Plant Upgrade Engineering Services. Turn this over to Manager Shoji.
Thank you Chair. Through the Chair, this report in front of you is to request award of a contract for engineering services and tendering services to complete the detailed design of Wood Creek Park Waste Water Treatment Plant, as well as some collection system improvements.
Thank you.
Do you have any?
All right.
I'm, I'm available to take any questions.
Thank you very much. Director McMahon?
I'm just happy to see this moving forward. This project is much needed and has been a long time coming. So I would be happy to move the recommendations on page sixty-three.
Thank you, and I've got seconders for that. I don't see any other hands up, so I will call the question. Because it's a single service participant, it's voting all directors. All those in favor? Thank you, that's carried. All right, moving on to Annex J, Infrastructure Services Department, two thousand and twenty-two Q four report. And I don't know if staff wanted to highlight anything specifically within the report, otherwise they're available to take any questions. This is for information. Director McMahon, I see your hand up. No? Okay. Yes? Go for it. You're not ready?
Okay, sorry, I was going to give somebody else a chance, but here I am. So the table on page seventy that shows development under review, there is a large development in my area, the Fitchett Road development, which involves both water and wastewater. And I don't see it on this list. So does that mean that we have already done every, everything? Or that it's not come to us yet? Or where is it? Thank you.
Thank you Chair, and thank you for the comment. This, this list is challenging to update and I'm hoping to improve it in the future. So thank you for pointing that out. Some of those, some projects are on the books for years and I have to try and find a way to address that better in this report because the Fitchett Road development was in two phases. One phase is complete and the second phase, I just had some more feedback about. So it might be back on the, back on the front burner to, to say. So you're correct that that has, that one piece of property has been under development for many years.
Thank you. And, and I noticed, I've, I've spoken to a couple of the Seashell projects on this list as well because this list can range the gamut of conceptual to permits in process. So it can be all over the place. Director Stamford?
Yes, thank you Chair. I appreciate to staff, appreciation to staff about how much information we get in these reports. As a new director, it really helps me understand the functions of the regional district. I have a question about on page seventy, Langdale Waste Water Plant. We, speaking about negotiations with the YMCA and combination with Langdale Waste Water Plant, is there considerations to upgrades on both systems if they combine? Or is this just strictly about how one joins to Langdale Waste Water? And my apologies if I don't understand the concept.
No, it's okay. It was really, it was really confusing when the report came through initially. So I will turn it over to Manager Waki.
Thank you Chair. It, it is a confusing subject. So the YMCA camp has their own treatment plant. That's reasonably new. It's ten or twelve years old. And it was originally designed for a future part to be installed for the SCRD. And, and it goes back many years. But that was never official. So what the, the staff have done is applied for a grant to replace the Langdale Waste Water Plant, which is right next door, which is in really poor condition. So we still, there's still a discussion needed with the YMCA to the direction that we take as a, as a group down there with wastewater. And we may need to install, replace our, our wastewater plant as what we've applied for the grant. But we may also be able to combine forces and, and have one wastewater plant, noting that the YMCA plant's in pretty good condition.
Thank you. Director Bax?
Now, when we're looking at the chart on page seventy, there's a lot of water hookups. Now, I, I wanted to bring forward the concerns of many people that I've talked to over the last few months, especially during time of drought and stage four, stage five water restrictions. The idea that we restrict the hookup of water during the higher stages of water restrictions. Now, I understand that would probably involve, I see heads being shook in the gallery. I, I know that would involve rewriting building permits to include that.
It's a lot more than that, but I'll let you finish before I, I answer that.
I just, I just, I just wanted to bring forward this obviously very controversial idea that I continually hear from my constituents in that, oh, we've, we're in a water crisis and we're still hooking up water. And I just wanted to express the opinions of a fair number of people that I've talked to over the last few months.
Thank you for that. It is a topic that has been discussed every year at the Regional District Table that I've been sitting here. I did attempt a motion a couple of years ago to that effect, to that very effect. And it wasn't a motion so much that was intended to stop development because the things that we have heard from staff over, over this time is that that may not actually be legal. Because people do have a, a right to build within zoning. They do have, like we do have processes and systems in place. And there are provincial rules, like this is more than just, no, you can't do it. It's something that we've discussed at great length. But the, at the, at the end of the day, new developments that come online are using less water per person than existing properties. And as we bring on new development, we're seeing our water consumption on the system continue to fall. So water consumption is still going down, even though we add these new users to the system. So I'll leave it there. I don't know if staff want to add to that, but Manager Waki?
I'll just add one comment that these are projects that have come onto our desk. It doesn't mean they're all going to actually happen. We're working on these projects. And some of them are ten years out or fifteen years out. They'll, they'll tell us that, that they, you know, they want our comments back on this large development. And then it just sort of goes cold for a couple of years.
Yeah.
I thank you and Manager Waki for the, for your answers. And it's an answer that I can bring back to the, the people that approach me on this issue.
Remind me, we'll follow up on offline about it.
Thank you.
Director Gabias?
Thank you Chair, and through you. I want to jump to solid waste, if I may. Looking at the page seventy-seven, I'm wondering, so three sites have been identified as possible future landfills and they're all located in Half Moon Bay. And I'm wondering, what will Spurling Hansen Associates be looking at? Like, what are the criterias of feasibility going forward?
So you're looking at the paragraph right in the middle of the page.
Future waste disposal options.
Thank you.
Yes.
Through the Chair, and thank you for the question. So yeah, our consultants, Spurling Hansen, doing that report, which the board will see in the coming months here when that's complete, are looking at all sorts of variables with topography, drainage. There's also the provincial landfill criteria, which stipulates buffering that landfills have to meet from watercourses, airports, all that sort of stuff. So they're doing a GIS analysis of all of that information and identifying some potential good locations.
Thank you. Director McMahon?
Yes, I just wanted to point out to my fellow rural directors, the chart on page, the bottom of page eighty-two, which shows the impact of the food waste program on the volume of garbage going to the landfill. It is so nice to see a chart that's trending in the right direction. So, thanks.
Thank you. And, and I would be remiss if I didn't point out the District of Seashell one that's immediately above it. So Director Lee?
Thank you Chair. It's unrelated, but we've contributed four tons now already, so that's good too. My question was actually back on page seventy-eight. And it's about bio cover. It mentions it's a partnership agreement between Seashell and SCRD. And so I'm afraid that I forgot what a bio cover was. I thought we were using some material from the chipper guys. But this seems to indicate that that's not quite correct. I was wondering if I could get a little clarity on that one, if I could?
Through the Chair, and thank you for the, the question. So this, this bio cover feasibility study is part of final closure for the landfill. And what it's doing is replacing traditional final closure cover material with a bio cover, which usually consists of a mixture of compost, biosolids and soil. And it's intended to try and absorb a lot of that methane that's, that's percolating up through the landfill and landfill gas. So it's, it's not quite the same thing as the wood chips, which are used in operations on the site for road maintenance and other sort of drainage assistance where we need them to soak up some moisture.
And it is, the last paragraph of that section, it is part of our two thousand and twenty-three budget process. I think we spoke to it a little bit about that in the previous round. Director Lee, follow up?
Yes, the biosolids you mentioned, is that a, something that's coming out of the settling ponds that we have? Is that, do I got that right? Or what the heck's biosolids?
It's coming out of the settling ponds that the District of Seashell has.
Yes.
We dredge the septic receiving ponds and we put it all into geo tubes to dry it out somewhat. And my understanding over the last couple of years is that's the material that's being utilized for, for part of the bio cover.
Thank you.
Thank you. Which hopefully helps provide a solution to both of us because we have to pay great costs to get rid of it. And the regional district, which includes the District of Seashell, has to pay great costs to bring in material to cover the landfill. So it may have some synergies. I don't see any other hands up, assuming, oh, Director Gabias?
In the nick of time, thank you Chair. And through you, I'm just looking at the very, very last chart on page eighty-four. And we recently heard that there was an increase in tonnage for green waste. And I'm wondering what, if that increases because of the, I understand that two thousand and twenty-two is not quite complete, but is it a forecasted increase in tonnage that we're? that we're looking at? Is it an increase in tonnage in the past three years? Or I just don't, like, does the way it is now, I just don't see a big increase? So I'm just wondering what that increase, where that increase comes from. Am I clear?
Okay, you're asking about, yeah, the increased tonnage compared to the chart because it doesn't have 2019, 2018 on it.
Right, right.
Is this the new normal? Is this?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Through the Chair, and thank you for the question. Yeah, I'm not entirely sure about where the increase may be coming from, only to speculate that as more people use it and divert more waste, we can expect to see increasing tonnages over time, as more people are hopefully not dumping it in the bush and using proper channels to get rid of it.
Thank you. Director McMahon.
Right, and I apologize if I've asked this before, but are we going to do an analysis of where it's all coming from? I noticed there, we had a bumper year in 2020 because everybody was home COVID isolating and working on their gardens. So maybe we've leveled off for a while, but we do need to figure out how to manage this. So will there be a report coming up on, with an analysis of where it's all coming from and what it is? Thanks.
Through the Chair, and thank you for the question. Yes, I have been talking with my staff about where we can free up some time to look at that this summer. I understand that it never took place previously because of staffing shortages and challenges, particularly during the summer when it's quite busy to pull an attendant out of our landfill or transfer station. But it is something we are working on and trying to make happen as I do agree it needs to be looked at.
Thank you. Director Lee.
I really do, thank you Chair, sorry. I really do like the charts. I would be remiss in that I kind of would like to know the dollar, the cost per ton for each one of these categories. But I know it's quite a large job to try and do that. Is there any thoughts on including that in future reports?
I'm just looking for a little more clarity on, when you say dollar per ton, are you looking at what it costs for us to process, you know, 2022's green waste tonnage, or are you looking at what people might be paying, like what we're receiving in revenue? Or just, I'm just looking for some clarity before I?
Both. In other words, what, where we get our revenue from?
Right.
And how much per ton it costs for each category. I suspect that the reason where I'm coming from, and I've never found the answer, but I believe that compared to just burying in the landfill, each one of those per ton costs are quite expensive. And I believe that you'd find that over and above the user fees, there is taxation that's actually paying for those to happen. And I've never actually seen that anywhere. So that's where my question comes from.
It's a good question. I suspect it would be challenging because in the case of at least garbage, you're talking about multiple materials, multiple different rates. Sometimes we change rates two or three times in a year throughout the process, but I'll look over at staff to see if they've got any insights.
Yeah, through the Chair, and thank you for the question. And yes, you are correct. It would be quite challenging to accurately compile all of that data, given all of these variables. You know, and there are lots of factors as well. Once we get into future waste disposal options, there's also the offset cost of diverting that waste versus building new waste facilities or exporting off coast. So there's all these types of questions that factor into whether something is good value or not. But it's certainly something I can take back to my staff and see if there's some way that we could easily compile some sort of financial data to include with these reports.
Thank you. And it may only be something that's available after year end, I'm wondering, but follow up?
Yes, I don't believe it's a priority. We're going to do it anyways, but it would be, if it was something that we could report on an ongoing basis, we'd know better where to focus our efforts.
For sure.
Yes.
Thank you. I don't see any other hands up. And so I think we're going to move on from the Q4 infrastructure report. Thank you very much for the presentation and for answering our questions. Next up, we have Annex K, which is the WASAC minutes. I don't believe there was anything in there for us to action. So then we look at communications, item thirteen Annex L, which is the 2022 WildSafe BC Annual Report Sunshine Coast. And Directors, I look to see if there's any. Director Gabius.
Thank you Chair, and through you. I'm just curious why Area B is not included in the wildlife activity summary?
It's not.
Don't ask questions you don't want the answer.
Thank you. I don't think you're going to get an answer to that at this time. You're right, A, D, E, and F. District of Seashell, Town of Gibson's. It'd be an interesting question to follow up with WildSafe vote at a later date. Director Lee.
I was a little disappointed to find that we didn't get a local person here to chase our bears around. Hopefully, hopefully it's corrected next year. I believe we paid the money anyways, so. But that's just a comment, something to look forward to next year.
For sure. Thank you. And that's just for information as well. So, okay, that concludes the majority of our agenda. We have no new business, but we do have an in-camera session. So I would look for a motion that the public be excluded from attendance at the meeting in accordance with Section 90, subsection 1E and I of the community charter. And I did see a mover. I've got a seconder. All those in favor? That's carried. Thank you very much. And may I have a motion to allow the alternate director for Area A to remain in the meeting? Moved and seconded. All those in favor? Thank you. That's carried. So we will just take a minute to go in camera. I don't- Thank you. That's carried. So we will just take a minute to go in camera. I don't.